Okay. Ready?
Human Rights Class, indeed.
Good evening, everyone. Start by welcoming our trustee, Michael McMahon. I come from Montgomery County and hopefully he'll follow in his father's footsteps. His father, I believe, was on the board as well years ago. We'll move on to turning this over to our annual organizational meeting. And with that, I'll turn it over to trustee Landrieu.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. At the July Board Meeting, we duly appointed nominating committee in accordance with the bylaws of the Board of Trustees. Presented the nominations for the slate of the officers for 2025 to 2026. The Chair of the Nominating Committee recommends to the Board of Trustees the following slate of officers 2025 through 2026 here. Chair Ed, Vice Chair Ty Bay, Treasurer Pat, and Secretary Maria. That is in the form of a motion.
We have a motion. Do we have a second? Second by Wendy. All those in favor?
Aye.
Post? None? Thank God for another year. That take a motion to add a motion to adjourn? Second? All those in favor?
Aye.
Post hearing none? Move on to regular business. We have any public comment, any comment today? None? I need approval of the minutes of the regular meeting of June 18th. Do I have a motion? So motion by trustee Wilson, second? Second by trustee Landrieu. All those in favor?
Aye.
Post hearing none? We'll move on to Chairman's report. I got a couple items. First off, the Board self-evaluation. If you haven't done it, please get it done ASAP. And the President's evaluation. If you haven't done it, Trust, President, Chuck and Miller will be sending it back out again so we can get it done. And my third order of business is the NYCCCT membership dues for the next year. NYCCCT offers training to new trustees and also existing trustees. They've been very helpful in the fight that we're currently underway with state, state SUNY Board Trustees concerning taking away our fiduciary responsibilities. The yearly fee is $26.45 and I would put that in the form of a motion and ask a second.
Second?
All those in favor?
Aye.
Post hearing none? Motion passes. And that's all I have concerning my report. With that, I'll move on to the President's report.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. And related to that, the last comment that the Chair made, at your place is a sheet that looks like this that outlines some listening sessions that Chancellor has scheduled for provide feedback. Excuse me, the rulemaking changes that are being proposed. The first one is was today, but there's, there's a virtual list, a virtual session on the 29th. And then another virtual session on the 18th of August. And then if you're so inclined to drive out to the western part of the state, here he has one. As well, et cetera. So again, we won't go into what those rule changes were, but as the Chair indicated, they proposed limiting or in some cases some of your, your current rights as, as a local board and substituting those at the state level. So NYCCCT is encouraging you to participate and advocating against those changes. So we'll see whether or not those listening sessions have any impact, but they are, they are there. Also at the state level and potential advocacy efforts, another sheet that's at your place, I believe we talked about this previously. But there, there is a bill that is currently on its way to the Governor's Desk for signature. It has been approved by both the Senate and the Assembly. And this would add an 11th trustee that, and that trustee would be elected from the largest shared governance body on campus. So it would, it would effectively add a faculty or staff member to the Board in a non-voting capacity, but in all other respects, that member of, would, would be able to participate in, in all discussions, including executive sessions and, you know, introduce agenda items, motions, et cetera. This has been around for a couple of years, but it finally got through. Obviously, the community college, NYCCCT and the Presidents were lobbying against this just because we feel there's an inherent conflict of interest. And, and not, we don't really see this as a very workable solution, but it appears as though the Governor is probably going to sign that. It is a fait accompli. If it is signed, it would, it would take effect next year. So we're here with just July of next year.
I attended the education session on this for the Bronson bill. They have a letter floating around that anyone can sign or, or?
Yep.
Did you all get that?
Yes, the letter is, you should have gotten. If you didn't, let me know and I'll send it to you. NYCCCT sent one letter out for everybody to fill out and send to the representatives concerning some of the other changes that the SUNY Board Trustees and the Chancellor have proposed and first changes go. I know, Mike, you haven't gotten it, but get your email address, we'll make sure you get it. And the form letter, basically, they, they want you to contact as many representatives as you can, both state and local representatives. Sponsors, sponsor our different municipalities and let them be aware. Make sure that they know that what's going on. Basically, what's happening is the SUNY Board, State Board is trying to propose legislation. They tried it and they didn't do it the right way. So now they're trying to do it the right way, which is bring it before the legislators and change the law, the state law. And now that's what the listening session is all about. The SUNY Chancellor is trying to explain his side. And they want us to reach out to as many legislators as possible because basically what they're doing is taking away our rights. And, and our rights concerning the President, the monetary amount that we provide the President on his, when his contract is due, the selection of the President process. They, they want to take that all the way from us, so. I'll make sure everybody gets that letter. I think, Maria, I think you've got a copy of it too. You sent me a copy of it and I think we sent a copy to all the trustees.
Next item that is at your table. A preliminary overview of the total reconciliation for the, for the mega bill. I'm not going to go over what, what specifically it, it says. There, there's a lot of this impact state operated campuses more than us, but there are specific things that do impact community colleges. And then there's also some, you know, speculation about the broader impact that we have Eric State. But specifically, there, there are some accountability provisions that have been put into the mega bill. First, first of which is one that, that cuts programs that the college has benefited from for many years. Our students have benefited from. This year, because the funds were allocated last year, I think we're going to be okay. So we were notified earlier, it was actually last week, that our trio grants appear to be renewing for one year. Those we applied for, they typically come in five-year increments. Money was allocated last fiscal year budget for the Feds or, or the current fiscal year for one year of that. So it looks like that's going to happen. Same thing with Title III, another federal program that we're currently benefiting from. But going forward, those programs have been stirred out in the mega bill. That's a significant amount of, of support that our students will receive that also impacts our staffing levels. And, and so, you know, all that, that is what the mega bill has. Those of you who are, are familiar with the process know that appropriation bills are now going to start happening. And there's opportunities still for, for some of those cuts to be stored through that process. So again, we, we encourage you to leverage your, your relationships and your advocacy efforts to, you know, make sure that those cuts don't happen in the future. There are some caps that were put onto parent plus loans, which really shouldn't impact us because they're, they're pretty high caps. There is new regulation that, that I'll call an earnings test. So if certain of your programs, associate degree programs, students in, I think it's four out of five years failed to earn a certain level on average versus students, versus individuals in that same field that don't have a degree, not eligible for federal financial aid and for, for student loans. It doesn't impact Pell, but they would be cut off from federal student loans. It's a little murky. I mean, I, I'm sure that on its surface, it sounds, you know, very reasonable and practical. It's, there's just a lot of uncertainty around how that's going to be implemented. An initial look at our programs are that we have a couple that none, none of them fail the test. We have a couple that are, you know, on the edge and, and one of them happens to be one of our largest programs. So we'll, we'll be keeping an eye on that and see how it's actually implemented. And again, it, it's going to impact those students who have loans, not, you know, Pell and tap and that kind of majorly. Positives, I think, out of the bill is they did fund the Pell Grant shortfall. Many, many, many of our students utilized Pell and it was projected to run out of money, which is, this is not the first time. It, this happens periodically, but they did put 10.5 billion into to shore that up for now. And, and you know, there's, at your leisure, you can take a look at some of the other impacts that it looks like it's going to have for us, but the big ones for us are really the federal grant programs that we've benefited from over the last few decades and, and the uncertainty around what's going to happen. We also received, and I shared this out with you previously, a letter just warning us about our, our obligations to not provide these public benefits to non-citizens. So, you know, that, that's not a requirement. It's just, they're, they're apparently looking for every opportunity to, you know, affect their policies. And, and that's not a huge population for us, anything like that. Something we have to make attention to. On the good news side, with the SUNY Reconnect Program, and SUNY Reconnect is what they branded the, the free community college for adult learners in, in high-demand fields. Did receive an additional allocation of, of $100,000 that is in theory continuing aid, so it's not a one and done thing. We submitted our plan, or I mean submitted our plan and that was approved recently. You may also recall from previous discussions, we, the colleges were allocating additional $8 million this year from the legislature that, that was not planned on. And SUNY has, has divvied that up and, and we're receiving an additional $75,000 from that pot of money. Has some restrictions on it. We did submit our plan on how to spend that money. It was due last week or due actually Monday. So they, they've got that and that again is supposed to be continuing money beyond this year. So that, those, those are positives. In terms of the college budget, Montgomery County Committees, I met with them on Tuesday. They, our public hearing on our budget is next Tuesday. And so we had a very positive conversation. I anticipate that being approved next Tuesday by Montgomery County. Fulton County set the public hearing date for August 11th, I think. It's their August meeting. And again, I had a positive meeting with their, I think it's anticipating that will, will go smoothly. Then, you know, of course, the next step is to submit that to SUNY mid-August for their approval. Probably saw when you pulled in, there's some, you know, building materials outside the Student Welcome Center. They're, they're moving right along with that project. In fact, they're, they're going, you know, they're on schedule and we hope that continues to be on schedule. We can have that building back online for the fall semester or shortly after it starts. Paving, I don't, I honestly don't know if we're going to get paving done this year. It's, it's so late here that bids have not even gone out. Notice has not gone out yet. It's, it's just, and the, the amount of bureaucratic steps involved with getting bids approved and, you know, actually bids notified or notice of award and, and then all of that stuff. I, I, I'm not anticipating we're going to be doing paving this year. It'll likely be spring of next year. We are moving forward with our athletics renovation, our athletics facilities renovations. So the gym floor is potentially going to be done this, this week. They've been busy working on that all week. The lighting is done in the gym. We've still got painting and bleacher upgrades and field renovations to, to go, but that is in progress. And I had a meeting with Fulton County as well on next year's capital projects. We are looking at some HVAC upgrades. Our central boiler plant is the original central boiler plant from when the college was built. One of our boilers can no longer be repaired, so we're looking at, at how we might address that next year. That was positive conversation with Fulton County. So then the other item, and this is something you'll deal with a little later on, is the CSEA agreement. Fulton County did approve that at their, their meeting on Monday. Went to the Montgomery County Committees last, on Tuesday and it's moving forward to their full legislature next week. So that is, is progressing. Our next negotiating session with ESP is tentatively, it hasn't been firmed up 100%, but it's tentatively in early August. So we're moving along with our collective bargaining negotiations as well. So I think everyone's tired of listening to my voice croak at this point, so I'll take a break and answer any questions you may have. Oh, the last, one, one more item that, that is at your place. We did have a webinar just yesterday with Department of Education. This was another bill that was passed as, as part of the same budget this year. It, it is about dual enrollment. This has been kind of like the Bronson bill. This has been circling for several years. The New York State Education Department has been clamoring to have a statewide policy for some time. The superintendents have been lobbying for it. As part of the budget legislation, there was money allocated as well to provide what they're essentially calling an opportunity program for some districts to help pay for those enrollment courses at those, those needy districts. But, you know, so, so again, all of this is still being developed. And the, the new thing is that, and we already have partnership agreements with the schools that we work with, but now as a condition of offering these programs in schools, these agreements have to be provided to the New York State Education Department. It'd say that they're not for approval, but they are for their records, that these, that these agreements exist. And there's also, of course, a new data reporting requirement that has not existed in the past that we will need to comply with. A lot of the burden in terms of submission comes from the A12s. There will be pieces that we have responsibility for as well. So you'll see on one of the pages toward the back, they just talk about the money that was allocated, what was out for. So there's $10 million for, for PTEC programs, $4 million for smart scholars, 38 and change million for existing PTECs. And then this $9 million fund that was set up for these districts that are in need to help support college and the high school programs. And then the, on page nine, you'll see some of the requirements that are, are therefore eligible if, if you want the funding. And it's really, and, and these are good things. Things where they are, well, transferable credits as opposed to we've had districts that want to offer electives to their students so that they'll actually, quite frankly, run in those districts, but they don't go anywhere. End up being, you know, they say a jump credit. So, you know, this, this says if you want, you want to dip into this pool of funding, you gotta, you gotta have credits that are going to transfer. And there's, there's also desire, and these, these requirements really parallel what the, the accrediting body for enrollment programs has out there. So it really kind of tries to establish some consistency and some quality to these programs. And then the last page, which really does apply to us, it's, it's what they'll provide to the district or pay for the, for the courses. So we're, we're watching this closely as it develops. The, I think the next, they hope to have more formulated deadlines on by the first of the year or at least in January. And then there's 2026, there are some of the reporting deadlines. So it did want to draw your attention to that. And now also.
Any questions? About transfer credits is very important because that's turned a lot of people off of community colleges for years as they thought they were going to go to a community college and then they found out that some of their credits weren't transferable into a four-year degree. And you have a hard time explaining to a lot of parents that community college is now, you know, their, their courses are transferable. Okay, move on to foundation report with Leslie Lancy.
Chair, my report is in your packets. I want to draw your attention to the distinguished alumni dinner, which is November 6th. If you have any distinguished, distinguished alumni you want to nominate, the forms are in your packets and also on our website. So that concludes my report unless anyone has any questions about the report in your packets.
Any questions? If not, we'll move on to committee reports. Finance, Dr. Frank Milligan will speak again.
I have just one brief item to talk about with finance. A couple of things, I guess. So as you know, we've had some transition in the finance team. We've had, we have some vacancies that we're here working to fill and we have making progress toward that goal. We, we have higher BURPSR, which has been a vacancy that we've had since December. We concluded interviews for senior account last week and have extended an offer which we will know by end of day tomorrow, whether or not that individual is accepted. But our year end is, is next month and, you know, coming right on the heels of year end is, is our annual audit. So with that in mind, and, and, you know, we have not just the college, but we have the auxiliary corporation and the foundation to consider as well. And so we have entered into an engagement with CFO Advisors from Saratoga and they're providing some accounting services for us to help lead through year end, help us through the audit and help us to transition new staff members onboard. They started this week. We had a, you know, positive first meeting with them. We've had some video conferencing with them before this week, but they're actually here this week. So, you know, I feel much more confident about our ability to move forward through the year end and, and through the audit with, with those individuals helping us out. In your packet, you'll notice, you know, this is, sometimes we try to do this sprinkled throughout the year, but, but this year we're doing a lot of this now, a lot of the cleanup of budget. If they recall back in the fall, we swept 12% of everybody's budget into a particular account just because we weren't sure where revenue was going to end up for the year. These that to those departments that actually needed the funds to cover expenses that were were coming up or already have happened. So there's a, a long list of budget transfers that are, that, that is for your information. And then there's also a motion for budget transfers requiring your authorization. So that is in your packet with, with the detail and, and the Chair will.
The Board of Trustees approve all budget transfers between budgetary departments that exceed $5,000 and all transfers that affect full-time salary accounts. Budget transfers arise primarily from the need to redistribute budget funding to cover expenses. This budget transfer for 2024, 2025 is needed to cover expenses related to contract services, maintenance supplies, professional development, software and college insurance. Therefore, the President recommends that the Board of Trustees approve the 2024, 2025 budget transfers listed on the attached page. And that's in the form of a motion. We have a second. Second by trustee Perry. All those in favor?
Aye.
Post hearing done? Motion pass. Who's your report, Gray? So we'll move on. Buildings and grounds with trustee Landrieu.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I have one item that the President hasn't spoken about and I'll speak. A new LED lights have been installed in the gym and it's made a huge difference in the quality of lighting. And that concludes my report.
It is, it is pretty dramatic. Thank you, trustee Landrieu. I know it was an excruciating report. We'll move on to academic affairs with trustee Wilson.
There, my report is in your packet. I have not had the opportunity to meet with Mr. Grande. He is on vacation, so we'll move forward, get some highlights from there for our next meeting.
Okay, thank you, trustee Wilson. And any questions for trustee Wilson? If not, we'll move on to trustee Perry. Student affairs.
Okay, full report is in our packet, but here are some of the highlights. The month of June was a time for our campus to connect with students finishing up on their school years across the area. We hosted 20 or 20, 200 rising Glover'sville Middle School students on campus to let them learn about academic programs for their potential future careers. Admission counselors, Teresa Minsen participated. Oh, Minsen, there's mine, sorry. Munson participated in the annual Glover'sville Career Day on the 16th. And on the 17th, admissions counselor, Selena Barber, attended the, and awarded students who received scholarships from FM at the Admissions counselor Selena Barber attended the and awarded students who received scholarships from FM at the Gloverstil Economic Award Ceremony. On the twenty fourth of June, admissions counselor Mia Franco attended the award and awarded students that received scholarships at Fund Fultonville Economic Award Ceremonies. And graduating seniors were also highlighted on area billboards congratulating them on their success. Additionally, Associate Dean of Enrollment John Ramaski attended and read a reentry and transitions fair at Hale Creek on June twenty fifth to speak to with soon to be released adult learners about potential opportunities for retraining and education. The STEP program hosted its second annual Juneteenth Aviation Day at the Fulton County Airport. In addition to helicopter rides, students also learned about drone technology, Life Net and weather observation systems. And lastly, the Liberty Partnership and STEP programs have started their summer program offerings. And in July, there'll be more detail for the next month's meetings. That's all I have to report.
Any questions for trustee Perry? No, we'll move on to diversity, equity and inclusion. John.
Should be in your packet with states related to diversity that should be of interest to you. This summer, well, it's just keeping updated with everything that's going on out there in the world of diversity and preparing for the fall semester and many opportunities for civil discourse, skill development.
Thank you, John. Any questions? If not, we'll move on to accreditation with Daniel.
So a couple items to report. The first one you probably already are aware of, but I'd like to report it anyway. We did officially receive our reaccreditation, the the affirmation of reaccreditation from Middle States late in June, early, early this month. So we are officially reaccredited and our next self study evaluation is in twenty thirty two, twenty twenty thirty two, thirty three. Other items related to Middle States, the annual institutional update process is underway. The relevant IPeds data has been loaded to the Middle States dashboard. That happened this month in July. That data will be refreshed in January of twenty six. At that time, we the college also provides its financial documentation. We collect it and upload it to provide it to Middle States. And then the results of that update and any feedback is provided back to us in the May-June timeframe. Couple other items. Middle States has issued a statement on the executive order that relates to the USDE. So on January fourteenth, the Supreme Court decided that the administration can move forward with the process of laying off nearly half the workers at the US Department of Education. So, like I said, Middle States had issued a statement basically understanding that they recognize the challenges inherent in the current legal and regulatory environment and that they look forward to working with continuing to work with the United States Department of Education as part of the regulatory triad. And a reminder that congressional authority is required to abolish the Department of Education. So again, a statement in response to the current Supreme Court ruling. And then the final thing for me to report on is that I attended a webinar on June twenty seventh that was hosted by the Association of Governing Boards of Universities and Colleges. That webinar was, the topic there was surrounding another executive order which has to do with with accreditation and accreditation bodies. Some of the key takeaways there is that student success is the driver for accreditation standards and that all constituencies, including the boards of colleges, need to understand their role in supporting and ensuring student success. They offered five things that boards could do now, and one of those things, again, centers around student success, and that is to make student success and equity a standing board priority. And I don't need to remind you folks, but your first goal, the first board goal of five is student success. So that so the board is has been well aware of that all along. So that session was not recorded, but they did supply some, did provide the slides from the session and some additional resources. So I'd be happy to supply those to the board, give those to Maria and and supply them to the board. Concludes my report.
Okay, any questions for Mr. Thomas? If not, I'm going to back up for a second and ask trustee. Do we have anything?
Well, since I haven't officially started yet, but I did attend that education session on the bill. A the letter encouraging everyone to have everyone send the letter, not just the trustees. So hopefully can everyone. And there are at least three listening sessions.
Yeah.
Right. And then yes, and then there are in person ones, right? But once I give Long Island, so now that's far. But what I've gotten so far.
Thank you. And now we'll move on to personnel with trustee Landry because the president stole your thunder on buildings and grounds. We'll give you, we'll give you personnel today.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I have a motion to approve the memorandum of the agreement between the CSEA and FMCC. The president recommends that the Board of Trustees approve the succession agreement between the CSEA and the Fulton Montgomery Community College as recommended by the negotiating team attached. Further, the board authorize the president to take the agreement to the Fulton and Montgomery Counties for their approval as required by the New York State Educational Law. This is in the form of a motion.
We have a motion. Do I have a second? Second by trustee Wilson. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, hearing none, the motion pass. Thank you, trustee Landry. Policy, the information's in your packet. Move on to other business. The only other thing that I would bring up is this ACCT, which they they included a letter to myself and President Trucker Miller. And that's the Association of Community Colleges of Trustees. They're asking us to join either as a member or as an individual. And I'm not sure if we want to do something like that. I know NYCCT is is connected with them as well.
It's about forty five hundred dollars.
Well, I think we'll skip the forty five hundred dollars.
I think we answered our own question.
We get information, we'll get it through NYCCT, but they did give us a nice little book if you want. Anybody wants to look through it? Have here. Other than that, anybody else have anything for the board?
The president was going to reset down.
Evaluation. Any race is going to be reset out and everybody's got the news release. This is what I was talking about earlier. You know, just read it. And that's what trustee Rivas was talking about. It's very important to contact sponsor our sponsors, many legislatures as possible, many people that we know as possible and explain how you can get a copy of the form letter they want us to send. They can send their own and inundate them legislators with this. Other than that, if there's no other business, I'll make move for a motion to adjourn. Oh, we have a mini retreat tonight, excuse me. So we'll motion to adjourn and then we'll move to the mini retreat. Motion to adjourn. I have a motion motion by trustee McMahon, second. Second trustee Wilson. All talking once. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, hearing none. We'll adjourn and trustees hang tight. We'll do a mini.